Right. Good. Connie, could you turn on your video? Excellent. Can you hear us? You're muted.
I can hear you, yes.
Hooray, okay.
Okay. We have anybody in? We don't have anybody else, right? Jack? Jack, no.
Jack's on, Jen just came on.
Oh, Jen's on, okay. Hi, Jen. Um, okay, it's six thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. We have two items on the regular agenda tonight. We have the Fontina application and we're here tonight for a public hearing on that application. And the second item on the agenda is the Menetoma Camps project. And that is just to discuss completeness and we'll get to that after the, after the Fontina application. So, um, Connie, it would be helpful. I don't know if there will be members of the public on that want to comment or ask questions. One of the purposes of the public hearing tonight is to hear from anyone who might have comments about your application or questions about it. And so we'll leave it open for that type of comment if there's anyone here who is interested in doing that. And there will be, I'll open it up again for comment if someone does come on. And typically, the way we start the public hearings is to hear from the applicant. And although planning board members have been involved in this from, from the start, obviously, it's helpful for everybody to have basic information about what the project is and what the content of your application is. And so Connie, if you could provide that. And before that, just to remind everyone, refresh everyone's memory procedurally about where we are with this application. We found the application complete to go forward with a public hearing on March twenty eighth. We had some discussion about what was included in the application. And at that point, we scheduled a site visit, which we held on April eleven. And several of us were there at the, at the site visit and we can talk a bit about that also. But to begin, Connie, if you want to summarize the application and talk a little bit about the highlights of it for anyone who might be new to the conversation.
Okay, thank you. So, a brief summary is, there is a seasonal camp that we bought last summer. And we would like to put a foundation under the camp. So we can use it year round. It would protect the plumbing from freezing. And so, so that's the basis of the application. Uh, what has kind of developed as we went along? So first, we applied for a building sign or use permit. Then we did an application to develop in a flood hazard area. And then finally, there was an application. I might have this wording wrong, but it was, it was pertaining to seasonal use versus year round use because it was determined by the planning board that if we went through with this, technically, the definition of it would be year round use instead of seasonal use. So the information kind of came from Duane and myself in pieces because it kind of developed along that line. And I think perhaps the crux of the matter is this camp is located too close to the shoreline to be a straightforward request and planning board proposal. And so I think the planning board has looked very closely at what that would mean and would it be permissible and can it move back from the shoreline reasonably? And so that, I believe, is just a summary of what we were looking to do, how it kind of developed into adding these other pieces. The intention of what we liked, would like to do remains the same. Does that satisfy the general explanation of what we're trying to do?
Thank you for that.
Okay.
And also as a reminder to planning board members and others who might be, might be listening. As Connie mentioned, this is an application really in, in two parts. One is related to construction of a foundation under an existing non-conforming structure. And there are specific requirements in the ordinance that address that type of situation in the non-conforming structures chapter of the ordinance. And then secondly, as was just mentioned, as we moved into this, we realized that the nature of some of the changes that have been made and will be made at this cottage really caused this to become a, a year round use residence rather than just a seasonal one. So the requirements for seasonal conversions in the land use ordinance also, also apply. Part of the foundation construction piece, because it's a non-conforming structure, that triggers site review by the planning board and it also requires the examination from with perspective of moving the building to meet setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. So part of what we looked at in the site visit was the situation on the property and whether or not moving of, of the building was, was feasible and practical. Um, so, planning board members, are there, are there questions or comments at this point that, that you would like to make?
I, I had a question. When we were at the site visit, you talked about different heights for the foundation, did you? And I think I saw the paperwork with your contractor for was up to five feet. Is that's, that's the plan? It's gonna vary, it may vary from one foot to five feet?
Well, um, so I'm glad you asked that question. When we first applied, we didn't have the floodplain engineer or survey person hadn't looked at it yet. And then he, we did have someone go out professionally and look at it and provided that information to the contractor. And he advised us that he could, he could put in an eight foot foundation if we wanted. We don't want that. And so, I will say, he, if we put in a six foot one, which he recommended for ease of walking around down there to get to the plumbing and so on, the whole house would raise up one foot. And I think we would like to do that. However, if there's any, we will accommodate whatever the planning board would like us to do. If you say six feet is too high, we don't want that whole house to go up a foot, which is what would be required for a six or a little under a six foot foundation, then we would go, we can go with four. So, um, truthfully, we just want to be able to get over to the plumbing without too much discomfort or crouching around. We'd like to do a little under six feet, but that is not set in stone. We can go with less than that if the planning board finds that that's a better solution.
I think that the problem is if it's six feet or more from the floor level to the ceiling, then it counts as livable space and then you get into a whole other issue about whether you have too many square feet close, too close to the water.
So he could make it under six feet. He wouldn't have to go to the full six feet. He could make it, I don't know. I, I make up a number here, but five and a half. He has the ability to, to vary the height. He just said that would be more comfortable for us. Again, that's not going to be living space for us. But if the planning board would like us to work a certain way, we will accommodate that. But you're, I remember you said that, Jack, about the six feet. So we would not go six feet, no matter what, because we don't want to add to the living square footage. Nor do we intend to make rooms and do things down there. We don't.
Application is really to build a foundation of up to six feet.
We could put it that way, yep, or under six feet.
Under six feet, yeah.
Yep. And the words did change as we went along because we realized that it would be possible after they came out, looked at the flood, the flood situation, part of that. Anyways, and then his recommendation.
And then Paul, should I say anything about the site visit? Greatest practical extent? Or Jen, Noel?
Yeah, I, I can, I can start and supplement, please. Several of us went on the site visit on the eleventh and now we got a good feel, I think, for the proximity of the water. And also, the, some of the limiting factors on the property, one of which is the new septic system, which is immediately behind the cottage, which really precludes movement of the cottage back toward the road because of that. There's a limitation in the other direction in terms of property boundary as well. I don't remember the, the footage to the property boundary, but it was relatively close. And then there are some, some freeze also, but I, I think the principal factor is the location of the septic system will be very problematic in terms of moving the building. Jen, did you want to add to that?
Just the trees were, I think, a factor for some of us. There are a lot of large trees. You'd have to remove a lot of them to fit the house into a different space there. So that was a concern.
And the lot itself is not, you know, it's, it's not, not hurting, but there aren't too many places to go on the lot.
The, the one, the biggest concern I had on the site visit was the, the house is very close to the water. And there's a sort of steep slope from the house down to the water. And the water from the roof is, is gutter to run to the lake. So there's a lot of water that comes off the roof that would go to the lake and there's no real stormwater management systems in place to control the amount of runoff going into the lake. So that's something that we need to discuss.
And in, in addition, Jack and I had asked Chip if he could get in touch with Bill Monigal from Coppice Watershed to take a look at the property, which he did. He accommodated our schedule, which is very good of him. He went out and took a look at it yesterday. And although we don't have a written report, he spoke with Chip and Chip, if you want to give us a summary of that.
Yeah, we've been trying to get ahold of Bill for a few weeks on your request. He had been a bit ill. They also have a major meeting tonight of Coppice, so appreciate him going by. He actually went today, this afternoon. And he inspected the property and he concurred with what we had talked about that the, right now, the frontage is well rooted and we've been assured by the Fortinis that they were not going to move any of the bushes or a few trees that were there. We, he did agree that we should be using all the erosion control factors that we can. And I'd like to see that as a condition. I believe the Fortinis have already related this to the Bellevues that they not only use silo fencing, but they also use substantial erosion control mulch to hold that down rather than digging to keep it in place and also use hay bales. Those are the three factors that are all, it's almost overkill, but I think with the position that the house is in and where the lake is, it would make great sense and it would also alleviate any problems for during construction and after construction, the erosion control mulch could be used as a further deterrent for any erosion into the lake. So he was very much in favor of the project with that caveat and he sent his apologies for not being able to print up a report in the short time he had, but he was favorable to the project.
What did he say about stormwater management?
Again, he, the way it's set up right now, where the house is and all, he had, he didn't give me any issues with it. So again, I think your idea with the rerouting the gutter drains makes a lot of sense. He was pleased where it is right now. He didn't see that that was a very steep slope. He did like the idea that all the current plantings, bushings and trees would stay and thought it would be adequate.
And, and that, I mean, that, that piece addresses the erosion supplementation control aspect of it. And then what Jack is talking about is, is, you know, possibly more focused on stormwater management, which is not in, in the plan currently, but there are best management practices for it and we've certainly required that kind of, of management on a lot of projects that we've approved on the lake. I mean, you know, where you know, where the water goes from the roof line and so forth. Jack, if you want to talk more about that, please do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert on stormwater management, but you know, I, I know that you said your contractor was aware of best management practices, but in our land use ordinance, we require that there be a written plan for how that's going to be handled. And I haven't seen a written plan and I don't know if Bill Monigal will write up a written plan for stormwater management or whether you can get a site engineer to do a plan, but but basically it's, you know, to have drainage channels with certain material in it and crushed rock and have some dry wells maybe because there's a lot of water that comes off that has nowhere to go but the lake. So I'd want to see that as a condition of moving forward with the project, that there be a written stormwater management plan from some professional.
And, and by way of some explanation, although it's an existing structure, because the improvements are being made to the existing structure, both the foundation and other, other aspects of it, what Refills Land Use Ordinance requires is that the planning board look at this from a site review perspective, which really applies, you know, all of the possible standards that would be applied in developing any, any type of, of project. And with a non-conforming structure, one of the goals is to make, you know, appropriate improvements. So as, as part of this, the foundation construction, the planning board would look at all of the site review standards and apply those that, you know, that are relevant and appropriate and stormwater management is one of those. It would result in a, you know, in a small improvement to the existing situation, which is what we're looking for.
And truthfully, I have to say, you know, I love that. So I'm, I'm, I'm actually grateful that we, no matter what the outcome is here, you know, we've never owned lakefront property. And this is, you know, by Jack bringing this up, I did, you know, just a little online research and, you know, definitely it would be good for us as well as the lake to put in some best practices for stormwater management and improve the whole situation. So I, I think regardless of where, where we're going here today, that's something that we want to do. Just because it's like good stewardship of being a lakefront owner, I think, so.
So you would be okay with the idea of putting a condition?
Yep.
On a
Yep, I would, we would. It's, it's a good idea and it, it doesn't, it just only does good things for the property and the lake, in my opinion, so.
That's nice to hear.
Well, why not? So.
Have any members of the public, any interested parties joined us who have questions or comments about the application? I see none. Planning board members, are there other questions, comments, issues with the application that you'd like to bring up?
I had one other question about the, you mentioned when putting a foundation and let's say it's five and a half feet or whatever. How much higher would the building go up in height?
Okay, so if we put a five foot foundation in, we've been told the building won't go up at all. If we put a six or nine inches over five feet, that's how much it will go up. So just to make it easy to talk about, if we did put in six feet, which we know we won't go that much, the building would go up one foot. We put in five feet, Ron Bellavance tells me the building will not go up at all. And so on.
Because our, our ordinance doesn't allow an increase of greater than three feet.
Right. He, and he did know that, that would equate to an eight foot foundation, which is nothing we're going to, so we're keeping it under six regardless, because we don't want to go into a new category or less than that, if that's what the planning board deems. But we didn't want it up that high either because it, I don't think it will actually look that nice. Look at a whole bunch of
Exactly what your original application said. Did it, did it address the, the height of the foundation?
I think the original application didn't really know where it was going because we hadn't, we didn't know what we could do. And I, I think it said like four feet or under five, or I'd have to look through the paperwork. I feel like there's been so much paperwork. Though I did, on the latest one, when we went to the year round versus seasonal conversion, they made it clear like under six feet. On the first one, that's the kind of page through, see how I phrased it.
The first one was eight feet or less.
All right.
Okay.
I mean, so we've learned some things along the way and that's where we ended up on. Ron Bellavance recommends we get close to the six feet, but not that high for comfort of getting over to the pipes and if you ever need to have a plumber or something. However, as I stated, we're not going to make that a condition of what we must do if the planning board isn't going to approve that height and they would approve something less. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, I mean, in terms of compliance with the ordinance, you know, what you need is given all the circumstances, something less than six feet.
Yep.
And so I think that what we would probably do is put forward a condition that just ensures that whatever is built is less than six feet and then you can let us know what that is.
Sure, that'd be perfect. Right in line with what we would most like to do.
Any, any other issues, planning board members? Not everyone was at the site visit. I didn't know if, I mean, those of you who weren't able to join us that night, I don't know if there were any specific questions about the circumstances of the property because we do need to determine, you know, with regard to the greatest practical extent, whether or not the building can be moved. And, you know, those of us who, who saw it, I think we're pretty confident that there wasn't really any place to go given the property boundary, the trees, the septic system, proximity of the water. But you know, if there are specific questions about that, one of us might be able to address those if you have them.
For me, it seems like there's been a thoughtful consideration of everything by the planning board. That's very reasonable. I do think it being not raising it any higher than it is would minimize impacts. So, sounds reasonable.
Okay, thanks, Noel. Anything else? And if not, I think we're ready for a motion.
Do we move to close the public hearing?
Yes, I'm sorry, please.
Second.
The move to seconded to close the hearing, discussion? Those in favor, Jack?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Pauline? Now we're ready for a motion on the application.
Are there, are there two applications, one for the foundation and one for the seasonal conversion?
Well, I guess we could do it in, in two different ways. I, I was, it's for, you know, it addresses two different aspects of the ordinance, but I was thinking of it as being a single application because in both cases, we are required to look at the site review criteria. And so rather than be repetitious in, in an approval, I was tending to look at it as a single approval that would address both aspects. We could do it either way. Jack, is there, is there some reason that you wouldn't be comfortable with a single notice of decision on this?
No, I think it's fine. I was just looking at the seasonal conversion language to see, but I, I guess it's fine.
And, you know, we definitely, we need to address both aspects and a notice of decision and make it clear that we're approving, you know, the foundation under an existing non-conforming structure. And then in addition, we're approving the seasonal conversion. Many of the standards are the same, but there are a couple of different things about them as well.
Okay. So, I can make a motion to approve the application as amended to build a foundation up to six feet in height and to permit a seasonal conversion of the property to year round use conditioned on standard conditions of approval. And that at least ten days before you begin construction, that you have submitted a stormwater management plan done by a professional to the code enforcement officer for his review. And I think that's it.
Do you want to include the less than six feet?
Yeah. I, I think I did.
I think you set up to, Jack.
Yeah. Oh, less than six, sorry, okay.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Now, Bill seconded, discussion? All those in favor, Jack?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Pauline, yes. Okay, Connie, thank you very much for working through this process with us. We appreciate it and we definitely appreciate you driving all the way up to attend the site visit with us as well. That was really helpful.
Oh, well, thank you all so much for the time and the energy and, and the education as well for some best practices with this project. So, thank you. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks a lot.
One thing is the code enforcement officer will have to give you a plumbing permit. Maybe he's already done that.
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
All right.
Also, he'll attach to the decision the standard conditions of approval, which you should look at and you'll have to get a certificate of occupancy after you complete all the construction work, which you get from the code enforcement officer.
Okay. Thank you again for walking us through this process. Okay, thank you again for walking us through this process. Must look like we have no idea what's going on, so.
Okay.
Thanks, appreciate it. Alright. Excellent, thank you, good night.
Night.
Okay, uh, second item on the agenda tonight is of the Manitoba camp uh project. And uh the tar box are here tonight, um. We've seen, um. Various pieces of the application, but we've not considered it um. As a board yet, so we're looking at this tonight for completeness only. And. To uh begin that discussion, um. And particularly because we've received, you know, chunks of this at di- at different times, it would be very helpful if. Um, you could summarize for us and go through the application and the pieces. Not every detail, but you know, the highlights and uh the various. Um, documents and plans and so forth that you've provided as part of the application. And an overall view of what the project is.
Well, the overall, the overall project consists of basically salvaging a building that. Is gradually creeping toward the lake, in other words, it's. And um it's a hundred year old structure. At least a hundred years old and never had a proper foundation, it just rested on wooden cells. And it's uh in the term of the, the, you know, really the only way to secure from. Moving is to put a partial foundation on, the foundation would be a U-shaped structure, no floor. Um, and, and they are strictly to. Stabilize the. Stabilize the building itself. Through that effect, we uh have. Um, you know, the terms of ownership is behind this. She funding for it. Um, designated a contractor, Stockhorn. Who has done a lot of the work in the past and it's a lot of. Area here. And um in terms of the review, we've submitted the plan to the. Favory of environmental protection approved. Army Corps of Engineers approved. And. We're at the point at this juncture, I think, in terms of completing this application. Of addressing the main point of this is. That everything there is old, in other words, the trees themselves. One of the trees is twelve feet and nine and a half that we need to. We, we look at that, um, another is ten and another nine and a half. So these are all old, old trees. Um, we hired a. Um, foresters come take a look at the, at the project before we ever started. He recommended, for example, uh cabling together one of the trees, just so that we. Was staying used, was staying up years more, so. Um, and basically, the, in terms of the, the. Completeness of the project at this point, again, the, the certification part of it, we have the two agencies. The floodplain, um. Application is coming, it's a question of the fact that. Uh, we were late, late, three months ago, um, making that request from their engineering to. Do a floodplain application. And um, and the survey of their Andy Van Bar is just now pretty much catching up to what he's. We could do, so that will be coming and I, and we expect certainly any approval of this project to. Do satisfy your, your recommendations and requirements for the floodplain application. But we're here today in terms of the completeness part of that. And that we haven't really been able to get there until. Move out to, not recently. And um, and we've had a hard time putting together a site. And um, hand drawn it, even though it is, it's just, it's just a lot of. Bits and pieces to this that are confusing. So I, I have developed a, maybe a, a different type of. Document to show what we're planning to do there, and that's the thing that's on you.
That was added to the website this afternoon. It's the last item on the website. It says Manitoba site plan, so. If anybody has a computer on.
And, and all the information was previously submitted, but at least for I received that you couldn't see it. It was just, it was just. Determine any of the pictures. They didn't come through at all. So this is an attempt to clarify, to clarify the site plan. And um, and at the same time, show you the, the reasons that we are. It is going back, I think it's for me in terms of non-performing structure. And moving the structure, maybe get ahead of the game on that to see where we, where we're going to be. Again, any of the, any of the, the according to the. The forester, any of the construction, we do have to be very careful with those roots. And that, and if we lose the trees, then we lose the stability of the bank, the thirty percent grade. Um, and I, when we were uh watching film with him, we need to book up. And see from the canopy, you get a rough idea of where the structure is at. And we really have almost no. No more work, you can, you'll, you'll see that with a site visit, but you, again. Um, really important part of this whole process. But anyway, so if I could just literally just walk through this, I mean, it's, it's not, um. It, 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 this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so and so. But the uh, but it's, it shows here, and I'm starting with the first one on the. There are three trees, the, 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 the self side tree, nine point five. Feet circumference, ten feet away from the corner of it. Okay, that's, that we need to look at that. And then on the, on the, on the, on the. North, north side, this is, this, the second picture, there is a, a, uh, it shows a. Tree on the east side with a flagging on it, which is the, the orange tape. And but behind that, if you look behind that, beyond the building, you'll see that monster up there. Um. And it also shows the steps that we, you know, the, other, other things, though that I don't think. Will materially. Uh, you know, influence the instruction, not where we can replace, we can replace that, can replace the roots. And then the, these, the south side is um. Tree is twelve feet from the, from the um. On the porch, um, and it's a eight foot circumference. Um. So that's, and then finally, the east side tree, the one headed up the hill. It's hard to see in this particular picture. Because of the little dinky tree here, that's got nothing to do with it, but just, again, the big tree, the one scavened, it's the top. So.
I have a question. Is, is your issue about moving this building back solely based on the trees?
Basically, yes. You know, well, there's, 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 there is a road, that's thirty, that's thirty-nine feet away. I don't think that, that materially would. Would, would, would um influence it, but it is the trees, yes.
And the last photo in the packet.
Yep. Yep.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. Did you hear me?
No.
Okay, when I look at the last picture in the packet. It looks to me like you could slide the building back. It's fairly level and then just have the deck. Overhang the water. And you protect the building more, but you're going to tell me you can't do that for some reason.
Well, I, 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 it is, it, it's not. It's not me that's explaining that, it's the forest office explaining that.
And he. So that's the roots.
The root issue, yes. And it's um, and then he, he, he said that, you know, the, the trees are good probably thirty, fifty years. And that they do stabilize the bank. And that the, uh, uh, really great concern is any significant damage to those roots. Uh, cause the tree die and those branches are gonna fall on the building. And it's um, and um, I, so, okay, maybe the, it, it, in order to move it back. Should we cut the tree, if we cut the trees down? Which I don't know how, I don't get that, anybody get that past DEP, but um if we cut those trees down. I'm sure you can move the, you can move at that point, but. At this point, he does not recommend moving any more digging, and we absolutely have to do. That's, that's more.
I wonder if for, for the file, we should get a letter from the forester explaining why. Moving the building back would destroy those trees. Cause it looks like just, I, I mean, I haven't done a, we haven't done a site visit, but. It looks like you could just slide the, slide the building backwards.
Jack, if I may, um. I, I think y'all know I'm DEP certified, I took the class, I am certified to make these calls, and whenever there's a tree that has to be removed. Within a hundred feet of the lake, I have to inspect it. These are three trees that I would never give permission to remove because of their, their girth. Their standing and they're holding up this bank, uh. That's, you know, supports the building, so. A site visit will make it very clear. I'm sure the uh forester will do that letter. But I'll tell you as the uh your official that inspects all these before anything's allowed to be cut down. And I do this often, I do it twice a week. I would never allow those trees to be cut.
Um, if I could make a comment on that, I, so I checked out the pictures, um. And so I was, I was kind of wondering the same thing as Jack about that, um. I was, the, so in terms of a consideration of moving it backwards away from the water. The tree that I see in that last picture. Looks like maybe a cedar with a ton of holes in it. It's, it's a relatively seemingly inconsequential. Tree, at least from the picture, it doesn't look, I mean, it doesn't look that big, not like those pine trees next to it. Is this at the tree, one of the trees we're talking about?
Or, no, the, that. It doesn't know the, uh, unfortunately, the angle, you can absolutely just catch a little piece of it. The very far right of the last photograph. It's on, it's the, that particular photograph, could have been moved a little bit, I guess, but couldn't, actually couldn't get the water out of it. But just a little piece of that tree is showing on the, on the far right of that.
So, I think that he's talking about this one.
Yeah, that other thing is not, no, that's not.
Yeah, yeah, but that's someone he's probably talking about.
And that's, and that's this one here. Or maybe, um, no, I think that's a lot, tape on it. Oh, no, that's the line, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking at, now that I see page five, I do see that. There's something more significant, you know, inland, it says thirty, thirty feet away, um, I noted. The first, you know, you don't have your foundation plan exactly, um. Set in stone yet. But one thing I noted is that you, you said concrete or helical posts, so. I could imagine whether it's moved or staying there, if you're putting the helical posts underneath it, that would probably be the. Least, I would imagine the least disruptive to the trees and the sediment. Um, so I couldn't imagine the trees being tremendously hurt unless you had one of the big roots putting those in the ground. Either way.
It, that honestly would be up to the, the contractor when the, when the time comes, that's. Um, and, and that's the, one other piece to this is that currently, and I think it does show in one of these photographs. That, you know, even though Luptoy Bon apparently is down already this year. Um. In the wintertime, those posts are actually in the water and in the ice and. And again, the site visit will show that those posts are gradually be pushed backwards toward the, toward the shoreline. And as such, are now supporting a covered porch in such a manner, um. That the, their rickety underpings. Now, in combination with the fact that the foundation is already twisted, in other words, the. Existing, it's not a foundation, sorry, the sill is already there, um, is, is twisted, well. Uh, has created an unsafe situation where it's highly likely of. Quite possible for the whole building to launch itself in. And so that is the, the secondary part of that, the DEP concern was that, that chunk three hundred. Um, square feet of hill, it's been a weight eroded, in other words, it's been, as the boats have gone by. Over the years have eroded back probably uh four to five feet. And of course, will continue. Do, erode away until we do something to, to stabilize that bank, so. It was, but the, my, just listening tonight on your concern, on the, on the concern about moving the building, that. Move, moving the building itself. Um, would, I think, be problematic, um, maybe not so much with helical posts, but I, I, that again, would be the contract.
Now, in terms of completeness of the application, one of, related to this conversation we're having. One of the things that I noticed about the application was that it was. Uh, it was pretty, pretty light on the discussion about this issue, about why. Um, you know, in, in Manitoba's view, it couldn't be moved back. I think there was a single sentence and it said something about legacy trees, but there wasn't um much explanation really. And I think the recommendation, the suggestion about having the forester who worked with you on that. Um, expand on that a bit, um, as part of the application would be very helpful. That whole issue of locating a non-conforming structure to meet the setback to the greatest. Practical extent is a really important piece of what we look at, uh, for those foundation placements and. So it would be really helpful to have more on.
Yep. And again, I think the site visit is absolutely imperative, because it really, it's something. It, they, we, it, it, it would put a lot into perspective, see where, where we are now, thank you.
Are there, are there any plumbing facilities in this building?
And a lot of them are non-planned.
Okay.
I was an outside, still, I, I, my wife kind of made it, well, it's on, it's an outside. There's an outside spigot that we use to hook the hose to the water, the vegetation on the front of the property. But there's nothing in the building.
Um. I may have overlooked it, but how large is the structure? Like, what's the, what's the square footage on the first floor?
Thirty-three by twenty-two six.
So small, pretty small.
It is small, it's, it was a craft building, it was, again, part of, part of our history of, of the association, one of, it's a voice camp. Um, it was, where they did all kinds of craft work.
There's, you know, wood, woodworking tables inside and stuff like that, and we hasn't been used now, we, they put danger up and we have a lot of it in there. It's a concern the last two, three years, and that was where kids could go and do painting, not worry about. You know, because the cabins in Manitoba were just cabins, you know, they're not. There's people who have enlarged, some of them, the most of them are just not that big, you know. So it was a place where a lot of them is used. Like the children.
Um, I had a question too about the, um. There wasn't really discussion about it, but I think in one of the pictures. And maybe in some of the narrative, there was reference to a permanent dock. It, is that existing?
Oh, yes.
And how long has that been there? Long time?
At least fifty, at least fifty years.
Okay. That was, it was very, it was unclear to me if if something was being proposed in terms of that dock.
Well, the dock was repaired several years ago, but.
And so the the D E P um it appeared to be a permit by rule.
Yes.
And the Army Corps. Um those are for the complete project or just the. Were they approving the, was the Army Corps approving the foundation? Or or just the riprap and adjacent to the to the lake?
Really good question, they are the both of them's agencies were confirmed with or concerned rather with the. With the fact that something needs to be done and our our our. Requests from them must be allowed to put in. If if again, if this, there are so many pictures involved with this. But we have the the original application to. The Department of Environment Environmental Protection. So a picture taken in nineteen fifty from the plane. And we took a picture two years, a year and a half ago with a drone, a drone duplicating that that. Picture and. Over the years, they torn out the 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 pre-assault beams that used to hold it up. Putting up a riprap retaining system and stop about six feet short of the. And it's if you look down that line, you'll see that the the shoreline is not moved. Uh in fifty years, except for that area beyond the.
And that's where the riprap is. And so it's the riprap project from both uh the D E P and the Army Corps that was approved and that's it.
I had a question, um you mentioned their engineering, are they they're they're involved in this project?
Yes, they are.
So is part of this thing to make sure that the building is structurally sound? As opposed to keeping it from eroding in the into the water there?
You mean currently is it?
Besides this foundation, are there other things you're doing to the building to make it structurally sound?
No, no, in other words, the is it when it's lifted and and dropped down again. The whatever the foundation selected by the contractor. Um will be sufficient to support the building. The 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 it's it's not the building, the structure itself, we've maintained the roof. And so there's there's little damage there. But um underneath where it's been sitting for years and years and years on just. On nothing but sills, um this there is really not any. Valuable support left there.
And that foundational support is the basis for finding that the building is unsafe, that it's.
How many feet high will the foundation be?
At this at this at this point, Jack, it's um if there's a lot of stuff going back and forth. Um we do store summer. Um water sports equipment under there at the last couple of years. And so this roughly six, it probably would be more than six feet. Wouldn't necessarily have to be, but that, a lot of that will depend upon their engineering in terms of the. Flood plan because they will tell us how high we gotta be. In other words, I think the lake level is something only over three hundred and twenty. Um feet and we need to be one foot above that when we're done doing what we're doing. And so that surveyor is the one, it will be the arbiters where, you know, what the final. What the final level would be, well, certainly, certainly we could, will not have to raise. Raise it raise or lower the building in any way.
And this foundation that you're building is only under the front part of the building? The back part of the building stays on the ground?
Probably be stepped down, as we come down the bank, it'll probably be stepped down as it comes um. And the no, the 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 previous efforts have all been sort of to create a dam. Against the, I can't think of a better word, barrier dam. Against the encroachment of the bank toward the lake. And it's so basically, then the it is really the root of the problem we have now. Is it indeed until we restructured the the gutter system. Um served to actually as an agent to push the buildings toward the lake. But that was solved years ago and. Um we started monitoring the progress of the building. Through a fixed point on the building and a. Um metal rod in the ground with a plumb bar, it has not moved in the eight years we've been monitoring. The building itself is not now moving, but if you can, if you look at it, it's the way. The posts are coming now, is the posts actually could be a cutting rock.
You you mentioned the gutter system, I couldn't understand that part.
Yeah, there is a gutter system on it that uh that is set up again in keeping with the architecture of the building. Um that carries it over. Several years ago, we contracted with Thirty Mile River to put in a erosion control. Basically, like a ladder steps on on the right-hand side of the building, looking uphill. And um at that time, we followed what their recommendation was to. To uh is the way to have that well, that's that stormwater. Um drain out so that it won't erode the bank and. Um and also so it wouldn't further exacerbate the condition of the building.
Is their engineering gonna look at that stormwater management and maybe come up with recommendations?
Yes, well, that that's all part of the floodplain piece of this, which is is in this particular instance is pretty important because. It um you're you're right in that these are uh issues that need to be addressed and. And I listened to the previous. Um application and that as we need to get a head start on that, but it's on. Like the stormwater management plan will be written and it will be, it's basically, they work with, I believe. Chip and the contractor rather than us for that, so um. Like everything else, trying to get somebody to do something.
Other questions, anyone?
So I I just, I um we need, I need to be, I'd like to request that the. When we leave here tonight, that we know exactly what I need to do to make this a complete application. In other words, I just, if there's a letter or an email or something that just explains exactly what you need. And I'll work for this for for the application we complete. And I really would love to have a site visit. And because that is so important because it really will determine where we go next.
Yeah, we'll we'll definitely do that, we'll we'll get to that, please. Well, a couple of things have come up, um you know, the the additional discussion about. Movement of the building potentially, so that's one, uh the issue of stormwater management, which we just talked about. Uh there's a whole flood hazard piece, which isn't part of the the site review application, but it's. Part of the package that the town would need to see. And that's all I have on my list, um other planning board members, um are there other? Other pieces that you noted that we might not have that you think that we need?
Well, the site plan is this, are these photos? And I wonder if there's just, it could be a hand drawing or there probably has done one. A written site plan that shows the building dimensions. Where the trees are relative to the building, where the road is relative to the building. And. Where the water is, you know, just something in writing, just it can.
There was one, I there, I found this.
Well, it's.
Age eleven in your package has also a plan that was done, so you might want to take a look at that.
It's a pretty rudimentary like plan view, sort of blow up of the front of the building on the shoreline.
Well, there, where is that one?
Age eleven of the package that was posted on the website.
The one that was posted today?
No, one was posted two days ago.
Two days.
The complete package per Jack's request.
I noticed page fifty-eight has a has an interesting graphic that um. Does demonstrate some site information.
What 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 page now, what what do you?
Fifty-eight has some information about the site.
Fifty-eight.
Chip, can you share that that you've got so people can see what you're looking at?
I wish I could, but this is a separate computer, so.
Yeah, the one I'm looking at is a little repetitive, but yeah, are you talking about the? No, you're talking about the one that has like the plan and section views?
No, it's not that one, he's looking at something different.
Age eleven on the fourteen, oh shoot, wrong one.
Okay, all right, that's.
Right, this is the one that I was thinking of.
Yeah, that was the one.
That's the one that, you know, but this one doesn't have. It it doesn't have a building or anything, and that one that him, I was looking at.
But it doesn't show, it doesn't show what Jack's asking, which is sort of the building with the proximity to the property lines and the trees and the. Uh you know, on a plan view, which I think is really what we're looking for.
And you know, and and typically, that's another piece is. You know, important to the conversation about, you know, potential movement of building to to know where those features are. And this, the the distances, the road, the trees, the water, property lines.
And I think we need a letter from the forester about why.
No, I have. Oh, okay, all right, very good. I do, Chip just rejected, perhaps Harold can do the do the site plan when he does the. When he does the letter, so he wouldn't be a man, so.
Okay, so we've got site plan, um more discussion and verbiage concerning. Uh greatest practical extent. Uh stormwater management plan and the flood hazard. Application information, anything else, anyone?
I did notice when I was going through this stuff that some of the applications, like the floodplain application where it says signature. Your name is typed in, but there's no actual signing of it, I don't know if that matters.
Uh it hasn't been an issue, but you're right, this is, I'm not computer savvy enough to be able to do that, so.
If you print it out and sign it, I can scan it back for you.
Okay, others, anything else? So I'm I'm assuming um we can, we can talk about this a bit, but I'm assuming that um. Given these outstanding pieces, we probably don't want to make a formal determination on completeness. Until we have something in hand. But I'm willing to.
Or we could condition it on.
We could condition that, it's a, it's a lot of material, but we could, we could.
And it would be good to have that material prior to the site visit.
Um others on that, I mean, I'm I'm okay with, you know, making a determination that's conditioned. Uh there's quite a bunch of stuff on here that would appear as as um as conditions if we do it, but.
I'm okay with that, but it would have, you know, we'd have to have all that before the site visit gets scheduled, but we, you know, I I agree. Think once we get it, then we can schedule the site visit.
Okay, that being the case, um is there a motion concerning completeness?
I'll make a motion to find the application complete, conditioned on the submittal of stormwater management plan. A site plan. And um information from the forester regarding the removal or damage to trees that might occur by. Moving the building back.
And it it sounds like part of the information was tied up in the flood hazard application too.
Yeah, and so. Would we be? We wouldn't be scheduling a public hearing and notifying the butters and scheduling a site visit as part of this? Or would we?
Well, if we, if we need to see the information, I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't know exactly when to do that. I don't know if I dare to do it, you know, two weeks, I don't think that's enough time.
Right.
So um. We could um. We could make the conditioned completeness determination um. And agree to schedule the site visit and the public hearing. As soon as possible following receipt of that information.
And notify butters.
Yeah, all of that, yeah. So it, you know, it's likely that we would um. Well, maybe we'll have something to look at at the next meeting and we could, we could do all of that then, but.
Yeah.
Now at this point, so.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, or we've, we've still got to complete this motion, but go ahead.
Go ahead, complete the motion, it's on a butters.
Okay, right, so um.
Should I, should I withdraw the motion?
Well, we, I mean, we can, we can proceed with it, it's, it's just, you know, logistically, it's just a little messy, I think we can go ahead and do it that way.
Okay, so we would find the application complete, conditioned on the submittal of these three items plus.
Three, include the flood hazard information as well.
Yeah.
It sounds like some of the stormwater management is tied up with the flood hazard.
Right, that too, and then note, schedule a public hearing, schedule a site visit and notify butters, but delay. Scheduling the site visit and the public hearing and notifying the butters until. We receive this, Chip receives this material first.
Following, yeah, receipt of of that information. So is there a second to Jack's motion?
Second.
Bill seconds, uh further discussion? Right, those in favor, uh Jack?
Yes.
Ken?
Um I'm refused on this one.
Oh, that's right, okay, um Henry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
I'm all yes. Okay, so um. We'll um we'll await your submission of additional innovation and then we'll take it up again and so.
I had a question.
Thank you much.
Okay. If I may, this is an interesting property in that a lot of the properties are in a communal situation. They have the houses. But the property itself is owned by the association. In terms of a butters, where do I go? Do I simply apply a butters to the association? If that's the case? Or do I apply it to the houses that are owned by the butters?
Well, I would assume that the butters are the property owners adjacent to, I mean, if Manitoba owns the entire property. Is that what you're saying?
That's why I wanted Woody to speak to that, yeah, so what is a butter if it's a kind of, just one confluence?
Yeah, and so, I mean, there's somebody at the end of that property. Or, you know.
And circles on one end and it's on the other.
Yeah.
Well, that's the question, are the butters? The ones outside of Manitoba, or are they the people that live within Manitoba? That own houses within proximity of the project?
It's, we did. The people that are members of Manitoba that live within that, that thing, they spent a lot of time last year discussing. Do we want to spend our money to do this, or something you want to do, because we're all going to have to chip in money? And so they're all aware.
Okay.
They noted that they want.
It's a plenty of questions.
And the, and, and the, and the membership of Manitoba order a hundred percent.
I mean, and my assumption, and you know, others weigh in on this if you want, but, I mean, what we're talking about here is about property owners. And if the single Manitoba property is owned by the Manitoba Association. I would look to a butters. Outside of, based to the Manitoba property.
I thought that the lots were owned individually in, in Camp Manitoba. Aren't they owned by individuals?
Say that again, Jack, please.
Aren't all the, all the lot, aren't, all the cabins in Camp Manitoba are separate lots?
The footprint.
They're taxed separately from each other. It's not one tax bill goes to Camp Manitoba and Camp Manitoba pays it and.
It's both, actually, coming and going. Each, each camp owner is taxed separately on its footprint. And, but the actual waterfront itself. In which all this. The, area, the area we're talking about. Or exists is a separate, is.
Is, is it, is it the entire, the enti-? So the cottages are, are owned individually, but the property beneath this Manitoba property?
No.
The association.
I don't think so, well.
No.
All right, well, I guess we don't know the answer to that until we.
I would send it, I would send the butters to the, you know, all the members of the association that have property, you know, that are. In the vicinity here, and then I would all, also. Send it to the neighboring lot line property owners as well, I mean, it's not that much of an additional effort, but I don't think, right, Chip? I'm not sure, but. I would err on the side of caution and broader communication towards making sure that you don't admit a butter, because then that would be. That could be challenged. It won't be challenged if you overly communicate it.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch about the next, next stuff.
September's coming fast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a couple of, well, we have minutes, let's do minutes first, there are two sets of minutes. We have a set from January tenth. I had sent around a day or two ago, a copy that had. Jack's suggested edits as well as mine on the January tenth minutes. And are there any additional? Comments on those? I don't know if you have a chance to look at them, hopefully, hopefully you did. Or we can take a minute now if you want to run through them. Yeah, Jack had made comments primarily around the project pieces that, you know, I was certainly in agreement with. And then I focused on the comprehensive plan discussion and my suggested edits were principally in that sector. Anyone have anything with respect to those? If not. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the January tenth minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bill seconds, discussion? I'll take a vote. Jack?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Polly, yes. And then the second set is from March twenty eighth and. Jack had sent around suggested edits to those. And I will take a motion on those. That was our motion on March twenty eighth minutes.
I move to approve as edited.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And I'm noting on those minutes, both Henry and Noel were. Not in attendance that night.
Yeah.
I'll take a.
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Okay, you weren't in attendance at that meeting, you might.
Sure, I'll send them.
I'm staying.
Bill?
Yes.
Polly, yes, Jan, I'm sorry, did I?
Yes.
And Bill and Polly, yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I had one more set of minutes from February twenty eighth, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at them. No, that was March.
March twenty.
Oh, I. There's also a set from February twenty eighth, which I can reset those and we can look at them at the next meeting, but.
Yeah, okay, I don't know why I.
I don't know. Oh, we said, okay.
A couple of additional items before we finish tonight. I just wanted to give you just a really quick status update on both the land use ordinance changes and the comp plan. The ordinance changes are complete as a result of the public hearing that we held. On whatever date it was, I think it was the twenty eighth of March. We, we didn't make any changes to the ordinance revisions that we had talked about earlier. And I've talked with Eric. He is putting a final version of those proposed revisions. Into the select board package to be made part of the warrant. And. So those are complete, except. Jack, as you and I discussed, you are going to send Eric a clean copy and include. Hopefully, the DEP diagram having to do with location of a building to the greatest practical extent. We wanted to ask you, Chip, about that, we had talked about attaching. A DEP diagram as an appendix, we looked at one. And it was a problem because it referenced the thirty percent requirement, which we found confusing. But then there was a second diagram that I think you produced that was clearer.
Right.
So you know what that one is?
Yes.
Okay, could you send that to Jack?
Okay.
And he will. Will attach that to the clean. Version of the L U R revisions and then forward that to Eric. And in terms of the, the comp plan. It's been. It's been a, a journey. And a lot of work, but it's, it's, it's almost finished and. I've been working in particular over the past few weeks, there have been a couple of comprehensive plan meetings. Trying to pull the final package together, and I've been working on the land use chapters in particular. Taking into account, among other things, a lot of the comments that. Planning board members made while we had the discussion of it that night. And I think that everything. That I can think of from my notes and from discussions with some of you. That's all been incorporated in one way or another into the plan. Some of the incorporations are pretty general, which is a good thing. And I would use as an example, you might remember that Don Litherell. Had made a suggestion about some sort of, it was a modified impact fee. That he was talking about possibly imposing. That would provide additional money to provide incentives for certain types of development in certain locations. And there was a lot of. You know, I talked about that concept with a couple of different people. And there continued to be a lot of concern about the. Leality of that approach and whether or not we'd be able to do it. And so what I did with that, and again, just by way of example. Is to make sure that there was a provision in the comp plan that would allow us to explore that further. But not hold us to a specific type of approach. So the ability to go forward with that and look at it and figure out if it's something that's appropriate to put in place or not. Is in the comp plan, but there's not a lot of specificity about it, it's, it's pretty wide open. We've got the ability to do it, but not a mandate to do it. And, and that really holds true of a number of things, and the further we got into those conversations. The more apparent it was that. That kind of vagueness is probably our friend in this case, so. Anyway, if you have the opportunity, you know, take a look at it. It's a lengthy, lengthy document. But it's, you know, clear which pieces are most relevant to the work of the planning board, there's a natural resources chapter. And an existing and a future land use chapter that are particularly interesting. So that's queued up, the final, I think Eric is looking to put the final draft. On, up on the website. At the beginning of next week, and there is a draft up there currently, but it's still getting a few tweaks. So next week, I think the final should be available if you're interested in taking a look at it. So any, any questions or comments about any of that, the ordinance revisions or the comp plan? And if not, the final item I have on my list for tonight. Jack and I thought it would be of. Some interest and, and some help possibly to have a conversation about. The boat storage facility on Route forty one, I think there have been some questions that have come up about. Whether or not the. The applicant, the property owner in this case, has fully complied with the notice of decision and. You know, what the status of that facility is. So Jack, if you want to talk about that a little bit, we can engage in a conversation of them.
So, in our ordinance, we have, I think most of you know that. We issued the notice of decision with conditions and then. Those conditions have to be met, and then a certificate of use or occupancy is issued by the code enforcement officer. After ensuring that the conditions have been met. So in this case. We require the applicant to devise a tree planting design to provide for the planting and maintenance of evergreen trees, to provide a visual buffer screen. From Route forty one and from the southern side of the property. The buffer shall be initially planted with trees of at least five to six feet in height. At least two rows, blah, 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 and that wasn't done. Apparently, I mean, I've gone by the site a few times and there's a few, you know, one to two foot trees. Sort of, just a handful of them planted. No, five to six foot trees, not where they're supposed to be. And so I raised the issue about, you know, why was this certificate of use and occupancy granted? Without the conditions being met. So. And I've had some conversations with Chip about it and. The, the applicant was supposed to submit a landscape plan to Chip. That met the requirements in the notice of decision and apparently that was not submitted either. And so, so I've raised the question about what are we going to do, I mean, it's an enforcement issue. But a certificate of occupancy or use, I don't think should have been granted. Unless the conditions have been met, and if there is a question about the conditions that we set forth in a notice of decision. Then the applicant or the code enforcement officer can come back to the planning board and say, I don't understand this, or can we change this or whatever. But so far, you know, these things haven't happened. So that's why this is being brought up.
Wasn't there also some discussion, Jack, about, I mean, I remember this application now, wasn't there some discussion about? Architectural features or?
Yeah, that was also promised by the applicant, they were in the minutes. They weren't specifically cited in the notice of decision, I don't think. But he did say that there would be architectural features, he mentioned a cupola and. Shutters around the windows, that didn't happen either.
Yeah.
If I, I, I've been approaching, I've been working with him on this. He had a, he had a good explanation, he couldn't, he needed the certificate of occupancy to. Use eyes the building for the winter, which supported. Everything else. He had full intentions, has full intentions of totally fulfilling everything that was asked. He tried to start it last spring, last fall, when this was approved. But between COVID and the time of the year, there weren't any of the trees of that size or girth that were needed. He is totally committed to planting the trees. I did ask for a, a plan for tonight, it didn't happen, I was in Wayne today, so that could have been a problem there. But he has totally committed to the full cadre of trees that were agreed on. He will comply with that, I have full faith that he will do such. So in terms of the planting and the trees, I'm very comfortable that. The board will have everything that was required, asked of. So in terms of the planting and the trees, I'm very comfortable that the board will have everything that was required, asked of. And that being said, in terms of the accoutrements to the building. The applicant brought up a very interesting question, which I did pose to you, Jack and Paula. That it was spoken about a cupola, now, my previous life in another town, cupolas were a nightmare for us, they are not. Defined in our ordinance. And so people get confused as to what a cupola is, and does it become part of the height of the building? And he had, you know, brought up those concerns, I did bring them up to you all. So that, that's kind of been left open, he is further open to. Discussion on other accoutrements you want, you know, whether it be shutters, those weren't included in the N O D. They were a discussion piece and again, this gentleman is totally willing to do whatever we determine, but I think in terms of. I, I'm pretty satisfied and I, you know, stake everything on it. That you will be pleased with the plantings, I will push him again for the plan, and I will get that to you by email. But let's get clear on what you want in terms of the features. Again, they weren't required in the N O D, but he's still willing to do it. And if you still want your cupola, I think we're going to have to define what a cupola is. And is that going to affect the height of the building, that was his biggest concern.
Well, my, my recollection, I, I might not remember this correctly, but I thought that he had proposed specific features in the application. I even thought they were drawings, I don't know if you remember, Jack, and I didn't go back. I didn't go back and look at the application itself, but.
I do recall, I do recall some drawings and things, yes.
Yeah.
You can find it though, I'm sure I have it here.
Yeah, um, you know, maybe, maybe we should go back and look at what was proposed, but, you know, my, again, my recollection is that he had some specific proposals about building features, but. You know, it's, I think, an example, i- if that's the case, if it was in the application, it doesn't have to be in the N O B, N O D.
Again.
Wire it, whatever, whatever goes into the application and the board approves is what they're bound to.
Yeah.
Whether or not it's specifically outlined again in the N O D.
Well, again, if everybody go back and check on that, and get back to me on what you expect. He's willing to do whatever there is, again, we still have the question on the cupola. And I think beyond that, there's a lot of things that were being thrown against the wall when we were discussing it in meetings.
Our ordinance doesn't count chimneys or steeples towards the height restriction.
We're talking cupola.
We put cupola in the same category as chimney or steeple, such things as.
Absolutely.
And he did, he did say, you know, it wasn't a minute, he was going to do the cupola, he was going to do the shutters and some other things, and. So we don't, you know, that's what he represented he was going to do. I personally, I don't care about those things, but.
My recollection is, is that. The other Buck was here that night, he was making comments about, you know, the other type storage buildings around and how they look kind of plain and vanilla. And it was in the discussions that things like that were discussed, and again. He's totally willing to do whatever is necessary, what is required. But again, I, I'm going to warn the board in terms of cupolas. If we require this and it gets done, you might have other people coming wanting them, and they do add to the size of the building. You know, and if it used in other instances, you've got to make sure that they're defined as. It's not allowed for access or egress, it can or can't be lit, there's a lot of different parameters, so be careful what you say when you say it's equal to a steeple or a. Flagpole, it's a very different animal that can be used in many different ways.
It says in our ordinance excluding chimneys, steeples, antennas and similar. App, app, I can't say that word. Which have, which have no. So.
This is a very. Out four foot cupolas with access, you're going to get people putting them on houses or businesses and using them like access and egress to. Patios or something that are raised, I'm just, I'm really asking you, be careful what we do here. Because it could set something that some architect or a person might use in the future, so if you're telling me that a cupola is equal to a steeple. That's the way I'll go with it in enforcement.
It, it doesn't have any floor area, right?
That's how you define it.
Yeah, that, that's what our ordinance says.
It doesn't, a true.
Very large cupola. Appurtenances, whatever we call them, calling them cupola and using them. And actually, you know, for access, egress, sitting areas or whatever.
That was a Connecticut thing, right?
Well, if Connecticut's coming to Maine, believe it or not, I'm seeing, not happy about it.
And in terms of the landscape plan, I think it's pretty straight, I think the notice of decision is totally clear on that.
It is, and that's being enforced.
Okay.
So why don't we, the application, see if, you know, the application actually contained any. You know.
Appurtenances.
Specific reference to, you know, such things as, you know, the building features aspect of it. And, and what the minutes say, and then we can take a look at that piece separately. But understanding that the property owner is in fact going to do the planting.
Right.
Right.
There's no confrontation here, there's total willingness to do what the board wants as required.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that's all I have, anybody else, anything more ready to mic, or we adjourn?
I think we're good.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.